Thank you. I am calling the Village of Cross Plains Board of Trustees Meeting of October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The order, please.
Trustee Bradley.
Here.
Trustee Brenner.
Here.
Trustee Borcar.
Here.
Trustee Borcar. Trustee Polkowski.
Here.
Trustee Calvator.
Here.
Here. Please stand for allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. While the village board encourages input from residents and may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. Do we have anybody here for the public comment? Do we have anybody in cyberspace there?
I don't see anyone.
Move to the consent agenda upon request of any trustee. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Are there any items that, uh, any of you would like, uh, Luke?
I like the eighteen, or eighty-three nineteen, the ordinance removal.
What number five?
Five.
Right, so number five.
I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented minus number five.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So moved. All right, we're at, uh, report of village officers. I have nothing that's not on the agenda tonight. Vice President?
Um, just to say again, trick or treat, um, is on Thursday night. I believe our hours are six to eight. And then also for employee anniversaries, we got some big ones. Jerry Gray is on, on October fourth with thirty-one years. Mike Axon on October thirtieth will be eighteen years. And Scotchman on October third was, um, no, on October twelve, plus three years. They, we think, okay, plus three years. So congratulations, everybody.
Yeah, super.
Uh, this direction on the hour is five, it's five to seven.
Five to seven for the old.
Five to seven, okay.
So the Halloween trick or treat was five to seven.
I missed them, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it. You should, then. All right, um, we'll go.
Oh, did you say us?
I'm gonna go to other trustee reports. Sarah?
Okay, I just wanted to give a shout out to the library. I went to their fall fest on Friday. They did a fantastic job. They had really creative activities. My kids had a blast. Took care of some of the carbon pumpkins obligation. I thought it was really great. Um, and it was really great seeing so many people inside the, um, library and it was a beautiful day, so the outside, so it was just a great, great job. And then the other thing I wanted to say, oh, also taking place in the area is the mammoth type challenge. So, I know I've been going in, like, stopping at the coffee shop on my way out on a hike, and I've seen other people. So I think it's one great thing for Cross Plains, bringing a lot of people into the area and a few of the businesses have gotten involved and done kind of some specials and some giveaways to the IH trail.
What is?
Oh, uh, they challenge you to hike forty-four miles. I have two miles left to go. And then throughout the month of October and visit three trail communities. So it's really trying to get people, um, uh, visiting the businesses. In fact, when you report your miles at the end, they ask you like, how much money did you spend on gas? How much did you spend in the businesses to really see?
Yeah, it's a really neat thing that they're doing.
Yeah.
It really is. Very creative.
And throughout the, the whole trails, right?
Cameron?
Just to add, I did not attend the fall festival, but the Lions Club did an excellent job on the, um, uh, Halloween decorations in front of the library.
Yep.
Um, one of the decorations scared my wife and it gave me a really good laugh, so it was.
Okay. Alrighty, anybody else? Michael?
I just wanna also thank, I went about a week and a half ago, the library and public facilities had a tour of the water treatment plant, so I went on that with them, and that was very excellent. Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you, Jared, for putting that on.
Very good. Yeah. All right, we'll go to village administrator.
I don't have anything that's not on the agenda.
Alrighty, we have village department heads or other reports. Bobby?
I'd just like to thank and recognize Renee Brett and Becky Bourne for all their awesome work with the election. We have been super swamped here and they're, they're killing it, so, good job.
Yeah, if you don't hear the numbers, so we've had nine hundred twenty-two, that represents thirty-one percent of the voters, so, pretty cool.
Well, and I also got to see our, uh, district Facebook page, our village members who presented to the high school students, so that's really exciting.
What was that?
Well, do you want to explain?
Sure, I can explain. A few weeks back, Becky and I were invited to the high school, to Middleton High School, to discuss how to register to vote. So it was the senior, senior class, um, that have like a, they were in their performing arts center, and then we got to, to explain how to register to vote to them, so.
Alrighty. Alright, we'll go to, uh, general business. Number one is discussion of possible action regarding parking lot license agreement between the Village of Cross Plains and Lake Ridge Bay. Ben, why don't you come right up to the table? People have questions for you. Um, I'm hoping everybody, uh, we had a meeting two weeks ago, kind of went over it. Uh, I put the memo together to do it. Since that meeting, uh, the Bay Kids agreed that, uh, they, we don't need the gazebo. So that will be removed from the agreement, but they'd like to keep, uh, the other, the other items in. Is that correct, Beth?
Yep, that's correct. Just, I don't, uh, what else you guys talked about, but just the change that happened. We were hoping to put a green space in there in the front corner, and we got the opportunity to get paved yet this fall without that cutout. So some of those, some of the original ideas, um, are no longer right there, yep. So we can get it done yet this year without that green space, but we were hoping to make that more of a landing point for, for bikes and visitors and, um, other public acts. So that, that is kind of the nature of, of where we started.
Alright, can I have a motion and a positive, please, and then, um?
Doug? I'll make a motion to approve the parking lot partnership as presented.
A second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Doug? I wasn't able to be at the full session. Um, I think it's showing support for businesses and our folks that wanna come to town. Um, I think we should wear up these types of opportunities, so I'm in favor.
Right? Anybody else? Go ahead, Michael.
Did you discuss the lighting with them at all?
Uh, yeah, I did. They're, they're aware of that. That, that's not part of this plan.
Okay.
But Derek, yes, I did bring that up, that they need to follow ordinance if they're gonna like that, so.
I just couldn't sound the drawing.
It was the architectural rendering that's not part of our proposal, so he thought it was a good idea. We did not ask for it.
Okay, just making sure, you know. Okay, I'm gonna say I'm gippy on this. I mean, it's a good idea, but like, business vintage, they're across the street. I think they're gonna get most of the things, most of the action from it. Why aren't they involved a little bit in it? I also don't know if the bench and the dignitif are gonna get any use. Seems, seems like we're wasting money on those things down there. I don't know who's really gonna sit there ever. I mean, choose as a parking lot. I like to keep things simple.
Okay. I, I'm obviously in, in favor of this. I think, you know, it's one of the things on my checklist that are issues of the village and been for a long time, and as I stated in the memo, the odds of us ever being able to afford, uh, or find space to put up a big parking facility isn't so. The next thing is we're gonna have to try to do multiple small ones, and I think this hits a part of town and that we're going to start developing with, uh, multi-use trail coming in. We've invested on that pedestrian crosswalk right there that makes it extremely safe. The cross fourteen, and we put in a sidewalk at the KP Bridge that didn't have one, so. Look, I think this is, just fits right into that whole area of trying to make that side of town safer for pedestrians and get them to the uh, west end of the boardwalk into that trail there, so. And if that Viking comes, uh, the new Viking trail, I don't think it's that far from that, even though you're right, it's, it's not right there, there, but it's close enough that people can get there on a bike. And the cost is pretty, is extremely good. Cameron?
I am kind of with Michael on this one. Um, I understand the cost is good and opportunity is here, but I, I just, I don't think this is exactly where, um, we need a parking lot for, for village use. I, I think of like a, where the village hall is gonna be, is gonna be a much more used and better spot. Parking lot, and I just, I think there's a lot of businesses over there that I think if, it would should probably help fund this, and I understand timing isn't gonna work to corral all of that with winter coming, but I think the vintage and a few other businesses over there should maybe chip in instead of taxpayers paying for half of it.
Right, anybody else, Doug?
So, as I hang out in the village and go do things, there's a lot of folks that park on Bourbon Road, right on the road, bring their bikes and do different things. Um, we are no longer dog owners, but we, dogs in it for a few days, so I actually was very appreciative of the bugglers for their dogs and just things I can always think of. I think this is gonna get used in a way more than you two might think. I also think the picnic table and the bike rack are good. I, I, I think when there's an event, when there's a day in town, there's a lot of people involved down there. So I think it's very responsible use of taxpayer money, and I think we should show all our businesses as much as we can.
Judy?
Yeah, we, we're doing Highway fourteen way back when. The big thing everybody's been doing was more parking. We need more public parking. We need more public parking. And Kim and Thesis just brought it up again the other night. Get, um, planning, there's only planning. So that's why I'm supporting it. It is more public parking. I feel like we're doing good justice to show we are in support. We know that we need a public parking.
And, and you look at when even Park School has event, and I know it's only twenty spots, but they get pretty crowded there, and this is less than forty yards from Park School, so it can also be used for that. I don't know if they still use the ball diamonds there anymore, but I know when they have events at, uh, Park School, there's always a parking problem, so this again would.
They were just using that area for trucking treatment.
Oh, were they? Okay. Okay. Any other comments? Alright, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Brad.
Yes.
Trustee Borcar.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Trustee Polkowski.
We go no.
Trustee Borcar.
No.
Trustee Calvator.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, we'll go to number two. Is the chief of the land coming up on this one? Okay. So we're at discussion of possible action regarding approval of the agreement between the Village of Cross Plains and, uh, Wisconsin Professional Police Association. Do you wanna do a summary or you want me to do it?
Why don't you go ahead and do it?
Alright, so as you know, the police contract, current one ends at the end of, of this year. So, um, there was, uh, Carly, the chief, and I, and then there was, um, Matt and a representative, uh, business agent of WPPA. Uh, we negotiated, uh, the new contract. Uh, if you looked at it, there's a lot of changes to it. Not only did we change, uh, some of the benefits and stuff, but we really cleaned up, uh, the language to it. There was a lot of, like, in a lot of things, bad language. That's why you're seeing a lot of the things crossed out and redefined, because we made the language a little bit more on what it is. We did not go with a two-year contract, went with a one-year. Uh, the reason behind that is it, it seems like I've been doing these negotiations for a long time, and we obviously work with the other village employees, and it always seems like they wanna compare with each other, so we might as well just have it one year every year for everybody. It'd be easier to keep things, uh, consistent. Um, there's some MOUs there. There are some major changes in the MOUs, which are brand new. Uh, one of them is what has become, uh, more common than when I was in the line of work is lateral transfers. It used to not be that way. If you went to another department and you started at the bottom and you worked your way up. Uh, there's language in here that is common that's out there, that someone can come into here laterally and get a higher pay than if they were just starting. Um, there, uh, again, that is, helps with recruitment in the sense that we're, to get people, people are more willing to move to another police department if they're not losing a whole lot of pay. Um, so that was one of the big ones. Um, the other one is uh, basically hiring someone and then putting them through the academy. Uh, as in dollars, uh, obviously because they're employees, we have to pay them. As you saw, I was at the seventy-five percent rate. The academy is free if they pass. If they don't pass, then the bill is seven grand at today's dollars. So there is that risk that if the person doesn't pass, that we would be on the hook for seven thousand dollars. That's kind of how the state does it. If they pass, the state pays Madison College and we don't do any, we don't have anything to do with it. If they don't, there is an option that some places have, and that would be something we'd have to talk about. We can, outside of this, when we hire someone, they can sign an agreement that they're have to pay so much if they don't make it or they leave in a period of time. So Madison has something like that, that they have to pay so much back if they quit or they don't make it all the way through. Um, so that, that would be the one thing that needs to be discussed. Um, the other big part was defining, uh, regular part-time employees. That was scattered throughout there, so there's its own section now that kind of goes through how that is going to work. Um, let's see, in the, the salary area, there were different, uh, the big one is they wanted, if you remember this contract, we eliminated the eighteen-month pay bump and moved the starting to that. Uh, they felt that going from starting and then having to wait three years before a step raise was too long, so they asked for the eighteen-month one to be put back in, uh, which we agreed to. Uh, the other, and then we redid, uh, the initial issue and what they can, uh, spend on, out of their uniform allowance. I think those were the key ones that we, we did. Carly or Chief, anything that I leave out that you think is important? And you can see that it's, the one that you got has all the changes and obviously red, not everything else that's crossed out. So I guess we'll, let's open it up for discussions, because there's some discussion items I'm, we need to talk.
Does it say there's three separate agenda items?
Well, I, I see that. I see that. Um, I just, if they're all tied together in a sense, you're right. The two MO, MOUs will talk separately. Is that what you're referring to? Yes. So, um, but that's why I kind of wanna have a discussion, because there could be, there's obviously ties to those, so. So, go ahead, Cameron.
And the start of the lateral movement?
Well, that's really a separate, um.
You know, I just got wicked. What do you wanna discuss first?
The first one would be the overall contract.
Okay.
Alright, Judy?
I was trying to clarify a question. I'm sure it's easy. Um, where it says the one for, for the, um, page twenty-two, where it says the sixty-degree credits, when they, um, go to school, one percent increase on the employee's yearly base. That is just a one, one chance deal, so we give them a one percent raise from their base after they graduate, and then a two percent if they hit the hundred and twenty degrees, right?
Correct. It's a two-year degree or a four-year?
Right, and then, and that's a one-time deal. We just give them one percent or two percent.
Yeah.
And then, I'm just asking that, really. Um, as far as vacations, is that pretty normal? As far as our,
Yeah, ours, you know.
Our scale. I was just curious. And then the other thing is for the, um, overtime, the compensation for banking overtime, where it says, um, will be paid over the next payroll period or at the employees designated carryover into the next calendar year, just.
So, so what was happening is, um, they were supposed to get paid out at the end of the year, clear the banks. The practice has been that we've allowed them to carry comp time over, and so we just wanted to make it within the contract. So if you want, that's what the practice, what stating here is what the practice has been. So.
So, so just to, just add to it, so technically they could have banked all their comp time and at the end of, right before the end of the year, cash it all in, kind of like a big Christmas gift.
Right.
And so we've always allowed them to kind of carry it. I think that just, but traditionally, I think it saves, it saves money. It's easier to cover rather than.
And it's only one week. I think it's, yeah, well, forty-eight hours.
And the main thing is that we, there's other additional language that it has to be used within the first six months, so you can't just carry it even beyond that, so, whatever you.
It mimics basically the vacation that would allow everybody to do it.
It's, yeah, just clean up. There's, there's a lot of cleanup.
And, and the forty-eight hours is because for officers, a week is sixteen, because they work a six-three location.
I was confused.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I did. Alright, Cameron and then Sarah.
This is, it'll probably be outside the scope of just the police contract, but why don't we just do forty or forty-eight hours, probably forty-eight carryover? Because I saw language in here too, like with the chief's permission and all this stuff, like, don't, can't we just simplify it and carry over that vacation if you have it?
Okay. I, I think we're allowing, that's what we are allowing.
Okay.
I, I guess I'm not understanding.
I guess, I don't know, it just, there was language in here that was like with the chief's permission, I guess.
I think it's usually the usage of it has to be clear.
Oh, usage, okay, 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 that makes sense.
Yeah. Alright, Sarah?
Uh, just a question on the gender piece. Is there a reason it's not they/them?
Say that again?
Instead of using he, she, like using they/them.
Oh. Yeah, we can do that, I.
Yeah. It's more inclusive.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. We'll go through and make that adjustment, not a big deal. Good catch.
So, I see there were substantial changes to part-time employees. Part-time officers. What was that about? Was that just saying?
Well, we needed to clean it up. If you, if you look on there, it's all over the place.
So you just kind of?
We kind of grouped it all together and kind of tried to do what other departments do on how they run it.
And also just, I mean, we added a part-time, this is the first, you really had a part-time officer. So, I mean, we could have probably cleaned it up, but we waited for this contract and then we go through it and follow. And the reunion, Brad did a really good job just cleaning it up for us. Contract is well cleaned up.
So with reading this, it kind of seemed like the, which I think was before, the part-time officer pretty much has to supply all the stuff, right, or all their stuff?
You know, for the most part, except for shirts, I think we all just kind of gave them.
Yeah, there was, but with all the other equipment.
Usually part-time already is hired somewhere full-time.
Right.
So it's, they're just bringing their stuff, kind of like what we do for UW football games.
Right.
Take our, you know, our equipment.
Anything else? Can I have a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented along with Sarah's suggestion.
A second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Alright, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Polkowski.
Yes.
Trustee Borcar.
Yes.
Trustee Calvator.
Yes.
Trustee Brandon.
Yes.
Trustee Borcar.
Yes.
Trustee Brenner.
Yes.
Yes. Alright, so now we'll go into the memorandums. So discussion and possible action regarding memorandum of understanding for police lateral transfer. So this would be just, uh, the lateral transfer.
So just like what Jay said, so this is to allow us to try to bring in people with a little more experience if we can and not have them lose. So I've gone through two hiring cycles already, and I have not been able to find anybody, so we'll be starting the new hiring cycle. I purposely waited till January in hopes that some of this stuff would pass to give me just a little bit better chance of getting, everybody's hiring, every department in counties, it has an opening. Um, so, you know, be as much competitive as we can be good. Um, so that's what these are about. Um, the, the committee also wanted me to specifically lay out a memo of what the, what that qualification would look like. And so I did present that to you guys as well.
Yeah. That's where I have, I, I think for me, I, I'm all for this, but I think that memo there needs to be defined a little bit more. And what I wanna know is, is you have the authority to, to put them at up to step five or five-year. So I, I, I need to know what, when you would start them at eighteen months, when you would start someone at three years, and when you would start them at five. What, what, what is the criteria that you're gonna use? Is it?
Their years, so.
Like a match.
So it would be a match.
So you're gonna use just a match?
You know.
So if someone comes with two years' experience, they're at eighteen months then?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that's, was that, is that, I didn't, I didn't under, is that how it was written?
More like summarized with the officer's prior experience. I was just gonna match up, keep it.
Oh, okay.
Also gonna try to.
I thought you're using their experience as, as, okay. So you're doing a straight year for year. So anybody, someone's been ten years, they're at five years.
Right.
Oh, okay.
That's very clean. Keep it simple, not try to, I guess it says chief's discretion, but really there's not a whole lot, because if somebody comes with two years, you're starting them at eighteen months, they're three, three, five.
Okay, no.
Fifteen.
As long as we all understand that's how you're doing it. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that. I just, that's not how I interpret that. I was looking at more experience. If they were a training officer or they had expertise on this, they may only be three years, but you think they should be at five because they're coming with, you know, they're damn trained or something like that.
I think this is a good start. I mean, if, if I'm still running into snaggles, maybe I come back and then maybe more clearly identify it, or or, or kind of like what we do now, if there's like an exceptional candidate, that, then I bring it to this board and say, could, you know, good.
Sure.
Alright, then I think that the board would make that ultimate decision.
Okay. Well, we're giving you the authority to do it. That's why I wanted to see, I just wanted to make sure there was a, a system, and if you're going year for year, I, that's very simple and very easy to defend.
Even if it's simple, yeah.
Does anybody else have any comments on this? Alright, can I have a motion then?
I can make a motion to accept the lateral transfer program.
Would be the memorandum of understanding.
Memorandum of understanding for the lateral transfer program.
I'll sign it then.
Alright, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. So moved. Alright, discussion and possible action regarding memorandum of understanding for police recruit academy.
This one also is just a way to try to recruit. We have had at least two, one local person, uh, tried to apply to our department. Um, they didn't have the academy, so there was no way to put them through. Um, there are, it was a local music center. Born and raised in the town. That would have loved their work here, but the, the problem is that the academies in our area are not taking people off the street, so you can't just go in by yourself. You have to be sponsored by a department. Uh, there's so many openings that, uh, M A T C will only take people that are already hired. They won't take someone that wants to just be a cop. Um, they're trying to save all the spots for, for the Fitchfords and the Middletons and the Sun Prairies. Um, some are even sending them as far as Box Valley or up to Janesville to go to school. Um, some are even sending them as far as Box Valley or up to Janesville to go to school.
Box Valley is in Appleton, just for people.
So Appleton, Janesville, they are sending them out, but then there's that cost of keeping them housed. So if this program is allowed, what would happen is if we we anticipate that we're gonna hire somebody. Um, I recall M A T C and then have them hold a spot for me. Um, and then and and again, they're starting at seventy five percent of the wage, we can s-. We have to start them, they'd be hired, they could come and do other things while we wait for the academy, they don't have to, you know, they. They can even do some of the field training stuff, as long as it's not active stuff, we can get them through all the paperwork and things like that. So this is just another avenue, I mean, if if I was hoping to get one or the other, I'd want the lateral transfer, as a chief, you kind of want experience. But this is also a way to kind of grow our own, uh, as you know, as a form of developing staff.
Cameron.
I I can't, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see any language for who pays for it, you know, especially in the case of a failure.
Well, right, that would be not, with with the union, cause this again, it's part of a a deal with the union, so the union is saying. We're okay with this, but it's really policymakers to come up with the agreement. For the individual, so that that is something we would have to come up with and have them sign. You know.
Outside of this.
Yes, yeah, this just gives, this just gives, the the union's given us permission to send. A member to the 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 academy. With this reduced pay.
Yes.
The other language, which you're talking about is like a pro rated, not if they leave, but the, you know, but that would be a legal document.
Would be a pre, would be a pre employment agreement, which would be out of our firm U S D O.
Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you. So you're right, that would be something we'd have to just come up with, Michael.
Okay, so, but kind of back to his question, we're just employing the individual, but we aren't paying for the academy.
No, well, no.
That that's what I thought he was, that was the academy being paid.
Boy, but he's saying in case someone fail.
So the academy is paid for by the state.
Okay, so that's.
Hire somebody, they get served, they basically get sworn in as an officer, they're hired. At that point, they're considered sponsored to the academy, so then the academy is paid for by the state.
Oh.
If they fail in the academy, which there is, it, I mean, there's a chance that somebody could fail, the academy is, uh, is. Even when Jay and I went through it, it's not the same as it is now. Um, and so there it's actually double the time, it's like seven hundred and twenty hours versus four hundred. So it. There's a chance that they could fail, so if they fail, then the state will send us the bill. Because our candidate failed. Um.
The village to build.
Right, yeah, then we're on the hook for that. Cause you're sponsoring.
I didn't understand how it's all working.
Yeah, so that's where these other. These other understandings or other um agreements can come in handy, cause if somebody fails, you can say, okay, I'm failed. We're not gonna be on the hook, you signed this contract, you're gonna pay us.
Oh, that's.
So that's how you do it.
That's what she was talking about with the plan. Yeah, cause we would hire and then say, will you, we'll send you to the academy, but you have to agree to this.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
So the scope of this is just, do we support?
Right.
Paying them seventy five percent and all that.
Right, cause we, to to go, to to get into the academy, you have to be hired by a police, a law enforcement agent.
That would be sworn in, yeah.
Whether they have to be sworn in.
Yeah, you have to be.
So before we swear them in, we say you gotta sign this.
Right, but it's part of the agreement, and that's the same thing, cause they're. And and that's why the union got it, cause we're not paying starting wages. We have this wage scale that's an exception for this, and that's part of the reason, if they don't, you know. If you did the calculations of the twenty five percent, it comes close to seven grand. And the reduced salary.
Believe it or not, though, most agencies are just footing bill and sending them off, they don't, they don't plan on them failing.
Right.
So, I mean, but it is a thing that can happen, there are some agencies that are doing the contracts, there are some that don't.
And and I I I, I I don't wanna say that they're planning about failure, I think what they're trying to do is protect the investment.
Right.
Right, but, cause that's an investment that.
Well, yeah, cause something weird could come on, you have to, they have to go away and do something else and they can't finish and.
Well, you can't plan for anything, you can't plan for them to fail, and you can't plan for them to say thank you and then leave as soon as they're done. Cause I've seen that happen at departments.
Madison has it where it's a three year academy and then two years after.
Which I'd be in favor of all that, and I think if you're hiring somebody that really wants to stay here, they'd sign that contract.
Cause we are investing in them, right? Any other discussion? All right, do I have a motion, please?
I will make the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for police.
I will second that motion.
All right, any dis- I have a motion and second, any discussion?
I'm gonna do a roll call, I have a roll call, please.
Let's see Brenner.
Yes.
Let's see Borker, yes, let's see Brandon.
Yes.
Let's see Cal Waiter.
Yes.
Let's see Jordan.
Yes.
Yes.
So I just have one question before I step off, so my, what I'm hearing, I I guess I didn't hear from this side, but. Um, is this something we need to put back on the agenda to try to to work on that language or?
You should come up with a draft of what the pre employment uh agreement would look like, yeah.
That me, me or Paul?
Was that? Well, I think you can copy it from a number of places, you know, I mean, eventually it'll go to Paul, just like all this went to Paul, you know.
Okay.
He's viewed it, but there's no sense having him do it from, and we can just copy someone else's.
Okay, I think I just wanna get moving on it, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely, so, you know, I get a draft and I just copy from somebody.
Okay.
I know Madison has one, that's a longer one, take a look, you know, if you wanted to grab that up. Do you have something by chance in your?
I don't, but I can tell Tony.
Okay. That'd be fair, yeah, just get something like that, I I wouldn't sit down and rewrite it, just copy someone else's. That's totally acceptable. All right. So we have discussion and possible action regarding a contract for mowing services for the village across plain.
Missed the lights on Hillenbrand Drive?
No, they're just in the run of orders.
I gotta follow this.
But then you're not, because actually.
Trying to get me in trouble here.
Go ahead, Mike.
All right, uh, following a successful twenty twenty four. Uh, obviously, uh, last year, uh, the board agreed through the Whitman for mowing services for twenty four. Uh, staff felt that they did a fantastic job, was very receptive to anything, I was pretty much in contact with them two, three, four times a week. Uh, you have really good communication, um. Kind of helped with inefficiencies for us too and things that were coming up, because I was kind of, I was scared, so. Did a great job, obviously trying to find ways to keep our budget in line and about a five year contract with Whitman might be one way to do it. And uh, as you can see, we presented a five year budget, that's pretty much in line with usually what we're kind of looking for, so. Um, the first year and twenty five would actually be a mowing increase at all from what you charge this year. For week mowing and then smaller increases two percent for the next three years and one one percent.
And I have to say, I got zero complaints this year.
No, they were all mad on like seven o'clock, they were seven oh one, they were out there.
Yeah, I was, it was impressive. Go ahead, make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the Rickman lawn care and snow removal bid for the five year contract.
I don't think it's snow removal. Oh, okay, I'm so.
I'll I'll second.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Doug. I'll just say live in my raspberry. They're um, very professional, courteous, it's either Chandler's dad, usually. Earned the five years.
Michael.
I was gonna say, yeah, I think they've done a great job, there's only, I do one possible request, is that when they're down at the community garden to grow the grass. Away from, they've been shooting it into it and kind of. That was, but no exciting thing, but it was, it was such a bad year.
Isn't that fertilizer, good fertilizer?
Pollinating it?
Yeah. Alrighty. All right, all in favor, say aye. All polls same, so move, all right, number six. Discussion and possible action regarding streetlight change at Hillenbrand Drive and Bourbon Road.
Uh, this started, I think, at uh Park. Um, that's where it came from, and then it went to public safety. So, um, their recommendation was to approve it, public safety approved it unanimously, they didn't see any issue with it, it's just. Switching the lights around a little bit and uh, apply to have better lighting at the park. Um, sounds like, um, from everything we've heard, it's not a very hard process to do. And just like, it's not a very hard process to change, it could be changed back if it becomes something else, but. Sounds like uh, it's been through a couple committees and and all the recommendation is that it be approved here.
All right, uh, we have a motion, and we'll just go right to discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the light changes at Hillenbrand and Bourbon.
All right, I have a motion and a second, discussion.
Well, yeah, I'll start it up, I mean, I know it's gonna be an easy change, but we know what it's gonna cost to do this, that's the one. Point, cause you know, you guys didn't know, right? Is that what it was? Yeah, okay. I would say get five at least to go in to look at the top and swivel it around.
You got a bucket truck?
But you're right, just to drive a truck here usually would be like.
All right.
Yeah, but I just went through a few committees, I went down there and looked at it, is there a specific reason why we're doing this? Or that just cause Tim thought it up?
But, well, Cody.
I I just think it's smart with the amount of lights that are there to push towards the park. And the stuff that we've had going on in parks and late at night.
I I'll be honest, I did the same thing, and there's, you see all those poles and then there's another one right there, so if anything, the the alternative would be. Pull a couple of those lights, it's, and and we got a little bit of history, and I think. I don't know if it was Jerry or somebody, the reason they have so many lights on Bourbon Road was that was gonna be our helicopter landing zone in emergency.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah. Yeah, um, so, to me, I don't have a pro, there's plenty of lights for the street, I went there to make sure at night that there was a lot of light. Even if that one was missing, and and there's plenty of light.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't.
Yeah, so it's just a matter, do we wanna flip it? Is there a a big desire to put more light into the park during? That's why, that that's the thing, other than.
Well, and fair parks can ban the lights, I mean, we got that.
The park is a lot of use.
Sure.
And what they get dark early.
Well, that's, well, right, well, and that was, and I went over there and looked at the street lighting also, and. With the way that they're placed, I mean, right directly in front of the park. There there isn't a pole, there's one further down, and then there's the two there and the one that you're looking to rotate closer to the corner because of the three. But when you rotate that one that we're speaking about, you cut off the street where those three cars are. That section of the street is what you're gonna be dimming, there's plenty of light at the corner, but you lose it coming up Hillenbrand, cause the one. That's at the bottom of the picture, basically get you, gets you halfway up to where the park is, and that section from the park to the corner drops out, is what you're gonna have.
I I I see no difference than every other block in the village. Those poles are still closer than like on Creekside Way and some of those other ones.
How do you, what do you mean?
Well, what I'm saying is there's always a dark, there's always, it's, it's, there's always a spot that's darker than right underneath the lights, right?
Well, yeah.
And and the the bell, uh, a lot of the village streets don't touch each other, there's dark spots.
Right, but what I'm saying is that when you invert that pole around. Where those cars are, you're creating the larger dark spot on the street, cause all the light is now going inward toward the park and not on the street. Okay, that's what I'm saying, is that dark spot is like on the A. Of where Hillenbrand is, cause the one at the bottom goes there and one from the top goes there, when you flip that around, you make that dark spot go right where those cars are, starts at the end, goes up. And if you're starting to have people getting into cars and small children, you're darkening the streets is what you're doing. What I'm saying is that you're actually intentionally darkening the street. Where there are cars, where there could be kids, are you trying to protect people in the street or are you trying to protect a park? This is just what my argument is, cause you're actually flipping it around, you're taking it away from the street and moving.
To make it a double.
So we're on. So that was just what I saw when I went up there and I looked around.
Yep, everything has pros and cons, right, so the question is, where's the most of the pro?
Well, that's why I asked. What the motivation was to put it in the street because, or to put it into the park, cause a managed vandalism can happen, but. Hasn't been, and if you're looking to protect people on the street, then leave the light on the street. Where is somebody more likely to get hurt? Are driving there, cause it's dark, or in the park? That's, that's where the question.
And again, we're just flipping it really six feet, if you think about it. A lot of the light from the pole is still gonna go into the street, it's not like all the lights going into the park, you still have the the bell shape, right? We're only flipping it six feet, right, those things are only six or eight feet.
So you're flipping it. Ten, going from one side to the other, but. The way that the light throws, the light is designed to throw like this forward, so when you turn it around the other way, it's throwing it this way into the park. You're, where the concentration of the light is going is designed to go on the road, when you're flipping it around, the back. The light doesn't come out of the pool like the same in both directions, the forward part is where they try to direct the majority of the light. And that's what I'm saying, when you flip it around, you're taking that off the road and you're putting the majority of the light into the park.
So, so the public safety committee's opinion was that there was plenty of light there not to make it unsafe, that's why they ran it through public safety. You're absolutely right, my plea doesn't feel light, but. Now they're adding it to park, just. But they didn't believe that it would be a public safety issue from the road, there's. I can tell you, there's dozens of other roads in town that are much darker than that area. And and people were at their fights, so. So I I. I agree that they're losing some light, but they believe that there was plenty of light there to still fit that. And then and then the caveat to it was, just like, the recommendation is now to switch it in, if there becomes an issue of public safety, they just. Has to switch it back on. That was, that was their thought process.
All right, any other discussion? All right, uh, let's do a roll call.
Trusty Brandon.
Yes.
Let's see Borker.
Yes, let's see Brenner.
Yeah. No.
Let's see Borkland.
Yes.
Let's see Cal Waiter.
Yes.
Yes. All right, number seven, discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of radars. Radar speed and message signs.
This was brought to you before in August as part of the capital improvement, I was asked to look into. Instead of having these individual signage, uh, to go out and look for the trailer. I did that, um, as you can see, the trailer is much more expensive, um, I just put it through public safety, um. For for one reason, the cost, they thought, you know, it'd be more beneficial to have the signs, um. Are my staff still is in favor of just having signs, um. This is, this is an item that if it's not a compare, I I'm going out there desperately, we'll try to look for some money. Um, because, I mean, we're up to thirty five hundred calls for services here. And six hundred of those calls are traffic related type calls, um, and staff is writing a. A lot of tickets, they they've written two. Um, and staff is writing a, a lot of tickets, they, they've written two hundred and fifty citations this year. Uh, to curb some of this traffic behavior. But, these signs, not only do they, you know, show your speed, but they, they do much more than the one on Springfield. These actually collect data, so that way we can send resources at the times that these, that these offenses are happening. Rather than trying to guess, and most of the time if we're sitting there, e- even though we're getting a lot of violations, when we're sitting there, people aren't. You know, they're, for the most part of us, they see, don't see us, they're not speeding. Um, so. Uh, right now, some of the grants are dried up for equipment, it's, it's hard to get grants for, because a lot of the. Those things go to bigger departments, same thing with staffing and stuff, but, um. I really, we, we used to have a sign, a, a speed trailer sign, when I first got here, the numbers are. They don't, they're, they're not good, the signs were really illegal. Um, so I'm at a point where, you know, the. For me, I would, I mean, I would recommend that you guys give the, 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 the signs and that we can move around. Um, over the big, the big trailer, um, cost wise.
Bobby.
I'll say, um, the chief does have plenty of savings in, uh, his budget. Cause of his, uh, vacancy this year, so we could, you know, just use general fund money to pay for this instead of borrowing. We can still do it next year as far as the capital, but.
And, and I know that Jay had, or there's, somebody else had concerns about the size of the sign. So I did call the company, there is three si- sizes, the one I'm asking for is the one in the middle. The, the smaller signs are, are much smaller, um. Not as versatile, the second one is the most popular sign, it's also popular because it's, it's a one man sign. So you can, one person can put it up rather than two, the other one is very, very big and it does require two people to try to. You know, to hang out, so that's why the second sign is much more popular. They're battery operated and solar operated, so they, they keep, you know, keep the, the, the power going. They also, um, so I ran this also through some, some groups and so like drought days, we could use that for. You know, parade route, slow down, you know, we can move these signs around to, to use other things rather than just speed and. We can also provide, um, information. You know, Memorial Day, parade, parade route, you know, slow down, something like that. So that's, that's the request.
Then Judy, and then myself.
And you might have already said this, but when you said, um, collects data, like what kind of, what all data?
But it collects just the speeds, like doesn't collect. It's not, doesn't collect license plates, doesn't collect even vehicle information, where it collects is three from two to four. Um, it collects that kind of data, not specific by later yet. Yeah, there is that kind of data, but kind of controversial when, uh, there's a lot of argument over that. So, he, here's, here's where I'm gonna, you know, since you brought this up, you know, I obviously do a lot of walking. They need to be mounted, are you getting a separate, is there portable? Poles that are coming with it?
They go on poles.
On poles, well, here, here's the thing, the poles that are probably most useful are the electric poles and they all have signs. That you're not allowed to put anything on them, right? That makes sense, cause. High power electricity, we wouldn't wanna do that, so you look at some of the streetlights, for example, one is, uh. Brewery Road that we just did, those are so far off the road, I'm wondering if they're even efficient. To, to mount these on, so that, that's one of my concerns is, are there really? Have we really looked at where we would mount these signs on the streets that you're getting most of your complaints? You know, again, when you look at Church Street, most of the. The, the lights that are there on basically electric poles, which you're not allowed to put these on. So, I'm just wondering, has anybody looked at that, what's the practicality and are there. Actually poles available that we could mount these on?
Any wooden pole would work on, I mean, it, you're, we're gonna have to find locations, I mean, there, there are locations all over town. Um. We, we get a lot of complaints on the side streets, not, not so much, I mean, we all know that people speed on church, people speed on. Even Valley, um, Main Street, those, those are, those are knowns. Uh, where we get the complaints are places like Lewis Street, uh, you know, by school, or, you know, things like that. Uh, Ulaia, you know, we just, we just got complaints over the weekend on that. So, it, it's nice to have on, on one of those poles, so we can actually catch data and maybe not. If maybe it's not really an issue and it's just, you know, hyp- hypersensitive citizens or, or whatever. Or maybe there isn't a situation there. So, it, it, it would help us collect the data, it would be able to send resources to those locations when it's actually happening. Cause we do get those complaints often, like Woffenberg, like, but then you sit there and there's. So this way we'd be able to collect the data, you're actually, her being beat, so you'd be able to find the signs in, in those. Presidential areas.
And do they strap on?
Nope, it's a strap.
Strap, and are, is that a battery, an external battery that sits on the ground? It's within? Okay, and you're looking for two? What, can we, I guess on my question is, can we do one and just see how it works instead of? I hate to buy two of them and then they sit in your garage, cause they're a pain in the butt, or. There isn't the posting that is efficient from, I don't know what their. Their, their zone is to get traffic.
Honest with you, I asked for two, so I could reach the level of, for capital improvement.
Oh, gotcha.
So, I mean, two makes the most sense, cause I could move them around and you'd have two working all the time. They're not that, I mean, they are expensive, they're four thousand dollars, but in the grand scheme of things. Um, they're not that big a deal, but if you guys wanted to start with them, that'd be fine, I, I, knowing is better than none.
Yeah, and I guess I would like to see the efficiency. You know, I'm always looking at, let's do a s- study on how efficient they are and how much data we're actually collecting. And if officers are willing to spend the time to put them up and stuff like, you know what I mean, I think, uh.
I'm gonna put them up.
Well, that's fine, whoever we have volunteers, that's fine, I, we, we had. The Madison Police Department has ones that you can put on cars, on the roof of the car, and the first, so you park your car, they put it there and they collect the data. You know, so, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but I guess I'd rather start with one. And see how it works and then go into two and then have two sitting in a garage. And.
They won't be sitting, but.
Well, uh, like I said, I know what you're saying, but I guess we'll just have to see if reality matches that. And I guess it doesn't hurt for me to do one and then if they're really. Work and everybody loves it, we look at doing more later, you know, and, you know. I, I do question the comment that it's not much money, that money could buy some other piece of equipment for your police, new police station, right?
Right, well, when one out of every four calls is.
No, no, I hear ya, there's, there's no doubt, I, I still get traffic concerns, not nearly as many as I used to. Well, no, I think, well, that may be it, but Brewery Road also, how we redesigned that. As made, cause that's where I got most of it. Yeah, there you go, but I, no, I, I would be more comfortable with joining with one than.
One is better than none, you know.
That's my comments, any other comments? Would someone like to make a motion?
I, I would like to make the motion that we purchase one radar speed and message sign.
I'll suck him down.
And so I can do that now.
Alright, um, so I have a motion in a second, yeah, we can take care of it. No, no, you're fine, you don't have to worry about the cost of it, just approval of it and Bobby can look at how to, to get it done. Okay, so, any other discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. All poll same, go move.
Thanks.
You bet.
I just also wanna say thanks Cody for helping out with the, uh, uh, active shooter. He was involved with our, we were doing some training and he played the bad guy.
You didn't have to, it wasn't too hard acting, huh? Alright, we are at, uh. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution accepting certain improvements. As set forth between the village and Creek Crossing at Saint Francis Company.
That'll be me.
Perfect.
Alright, so this one is for Creek Crossing in the village, so this is to, this is a resolution to accept. The improvements, um, that have been completed by the developer, so, um, we received payment recently, that was our. Our, our final payment was for the roundabout, um, one of the outlets. Over at Creek Crossing, that will be handed over to the village to maintain, um, so these are all of the items that, um. We are accepting, um, if you choose to do so, so the pedestrian bridge, streetlights. Lift station, pump upgrade, which is, um, in the development agreement. Stormwater area planting, so like I said, that, um. That, uh, traffic circle, stormwater conveyance grasses, all grass plantings, um, will be dedicated to the public. And then the final lift of asphalt, um, so. That's what we've got there, is there anything I need to add?
Just, you know, the village, uh, engineer has signed off on it, the checklist has been completed. Jerry, Public Works has also checked up on it, so that came through staff and they all approved that. Everything is meeting what we've asked them to do and now it becomes village property.
Is that the roundabout where the neighborhood had a concern?
Yeah, we finally have a resolution to that, not what I really wanted, but. We just gotta get it done.
Yeah, so when this is accepted, then the village will take over the maintenance of the outlets and then we'll close out the developers' agreement.
Go ahead, go ahead Doug.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented for Creek Crossing.
So we have a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Uh, we better do a roll call on this.
Take out later, yes. Yes, Trusty Formakowski.
Yes.
Trusty Brunner.
Yeah.
Yeah, Trusty Brandon.
Yes. Yes. Alrighty, great, alright, number nine, discussion and possible action regarding village ordinance. Five point zero two sub one, sustainability committee staff person. Would you like me to take this?
Sure, otherwise I can, I can, I'll start out, um, so for the sustainability committee. Um, we've had some discussions that it makes sense for that to be held, um, the staff person would be someone from Public Works. As they don't have their own committee, um, so the recommendation is to have that begin as of January one. I would be the staff liaison until then, um, but then as of January one, Jerry or someone in his staff. Um, would agree to run those meetings, um, to take a, a couple, a meeting off of my workload.
We do, cause it's an ordinance change.
Um, I'm not sure how to word it, but I'm gonna word it, I make a motion to approve the agenda, my mer- my, Miranda. Regarding the Public Works Department, um, being the head of this, um. Uh, uh, the director staff of this subs- subs-. Subtenable committee meeting starting January first, two thousand twenty-five.
May I just make, uh, a suggestion, instead of, uh, it's not an MOU, it's a change in ordinance, so the ordinance. Change in ordinance five point zero two sub one.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Alright, you do have a second.
I'll second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, discussion?
It's all fine with.
Yeah, we, we've met with Jerry. And he's agreed and. It's all good. Alright, all in favor, say aye. All poll same, so move. I would ask that we move new item eleven. Which was number five from the consent agenda up to now and then we'll do all the budget stuff. Do I have a motion?
Probably a motion to do that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Alright, so, uh, we're pulling off, uh, number five. Which was the. The approval ordinance to repeal and recreate section eighty-three point one nine. And the village code of ordinances regarding developments in designated water quality coordinator areas. History on this. We had this, it was pulled off, it was removed from our ordinance book. And then when Bill was making a change to, um. The ordinance, the rest of it, he had a bad, he had an old version of it. So, we approved and we put this back in, so we just need to pull it back out. And Michael wanted this, did you have a?
No, I, I mean. Not at all, I just wanted the reasoning for why it was being taken off, since it's ordinance, there wasn't a write-up in the. For transparency, so if somebody saw this, no one would know why we were taking it out, I wanted.
Oh, gotcha.
Go on record why we were removing it.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking we did it at a earlier meeting, didn't this come up and you kind of explained it?
That was at a planning committee, but it hasn't been at the. I just wanted the explanation to be known at the board level, why we're removing it, cause. There wasn't anything in the write-up, it's just removing this, it was like. Somebody might wanna know why we're doing it, which.
So I was, that's a very good point, I, I thought, again, I get mixed up when I'm talking what issue, that what meeting, so. Yes, that, that was, it was a clerical error, uh, having an old ordinance when we updated an ordinance. So this was removed years ago.
Yeah, I will say, once in our sustainability, uh, survey that we did at residence, somebody actually said to bring back the water. The, the designated wa- water quality coordinator was one of our responses.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sure there are. Alright, so, um, can I have a motion please?
Uh, I will make the motion to approve the ordinance to re- repeal and recreate section eighty-three dot one nine of the village code of ordinance. Regarding development in designated water quality or, or areas.
I have a motion, instructing any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All poll same, go move. Thank you, uh, Michael, I just assumed we had already discussed it. Alright, number ten. Uh, this one's gonna be a little, uh. What we'll do is, um. I'm trying to, let's do. Let's do the supplement request first. If that makes sense and then we'll, we'll do, it's broken into basically two sections, you have the draft, you have the wage and benefits. And then you have the supplement request, so, uh, we'll kind of break this, let's do the supplements first, we'll go in order. Um, in the alphabetical order. So the first one is health insurance contribution rate.
Yeah, I'm going.
Yeah, I know, I kinda screwed up, I know it's not in order, but it doesn't make sense to do all of it and then do the supplements after, so.
Is this where you wanna start Bobby? Yeah, maybe.
Um, so last year, staff really focused on wages, um, this year we looked at some different benefit options. Um, and one of the ideas we came up with was, um, so we current, the village currently pays. Eighty-eight percent of the lowest cost plan for Dane County for health insurance, um. The state, uh, allows you to pay eighty-eight percent of an average of the tier one plans, so the village pays. Less than we could for its health insurance, um, so we just kind of looked at. Um, what that would look like as far as costs. I guess kind of a caveat is, we, we did these. This information earlier in the year and then as we got closer to budget time, we. We do understand that this probably can't happen this year, um, it's just something we want you guys to be aware of, that it's something we would like. Um, and to maybe look at next year. Again, something, the majority of, I would say municipalities do eighty-eight percent. Again, something, the majority of, I would say municipalities, do eighty-eight percent of the average. Again, it's just something, um, as, we have a lot of employees who don't take the lowest plan. And so it's just to kind of help them out towards their insurance costs. Yes, are there any questions on that?
Well, I guess, yeah, I guess I have one, so you're saying we can't afford to do that, to do this, this year, and this is more of an information thing?
I mean, we, we can afford it if we cut other things. But.
Alright.
Because there is a cost of the whole lookage there.
Right, but, so this isn't in the draft budget, right?
It is not, no. No.
Okay.
So right, if we were to vote to implement this, it'd be an extra sixteen.
Yeah, I, I saw the sixteen thousand two seventy-five, tell me of the nine percent, it's nine percent over. So the budget is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand six twenty-five, how much, what's the dollar amount of that nine percent? So is it forty-three thousand basically, or forty thousand, uh, insurance went up from twenty-four to twenty-five?
Right, so.
Okay.
Considering the low, you know.
Yeah.
Eighty percent of the lowest.
Right, yeah, yeah, I'm looking at what we paid in twenty twenty-four, using the same system. With the increase in insurance of nine percent. It goes up to four thirty-eight, so I'm assuming it's about forty thousand, it went up. I'm trying, well, I'm trying to do dollars in my head, because that's what's important to know for twenty twenty-five levy limit, so I, I just need to know. If, am I calculating it correct?
It went up thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand?
Like what it looks like, like, if you really close.
Yes.
And why nine percent? Why is the supplemental amount only sixteen thousand?
Because that's above that.
Right, this could be in addition to what?
That's why, that's why I'm trying to get it, it's good, because if you, if it's thirty-seven thousand, then you'd be looking as, we're actually wanting. If, if we did this, it'd be jumping up fifty-three thousand.
Right.
Right, I would just wanna make sure I'm understanding everything. Okay. Do, does anybody have any questions on this, I guess we, unless people are interested in cutting from. Budgets, and I don't know if you have proposals on where the cuts would come from, I'm not.
No, I think, we would kind of prefer look, you know, adding more to which is. And it's like, again, this was something we looked at a couple months ago, and then as we got closer and looking at the levy limit a little bit more and. Other stuff, like, okay, maybe this year isn't the, the best year.
Alright, fair enough.
Cameron? I wanna make sure I have all the numbers right, because now I'm confused and stuff, so with the current budget, so the item we jumped over, though, we are within. Seven hundred and fifty dollars of the levy limit.
Yeah.
And this would add.
This would put us over.
This would put us way over.
Yeah, so then we'd have to cut some other.
We'd have to cut fifty thousand dollars.
The thirty-seven thousand is in the budget.
Four thirty-eight is already.
Yes.
So then a supplemental is sixteen thousand.
So Jay, what were you talking about fifty thousand?
Because I want, they have a lump sum, I wanted to know what the increase from twenty-four to twenty-five is. I have what twenty-five is, I don't have the twenty-four that I would subtract from that, I just did ten percent would be forty-three thousand, right?
He's getting fifty-three because he's going from four oh one to. Four fifty, or whatever, six, sixteen hundred and thirty-eight is, so that's fifty-two, that's.
I'm trying to figure out what we're already spending in increased health insurance.
He's doing that whole.
Yeah.
Yeah, health insurance.
Yeah.
That's, so I'm just, I'm trying to get the numbers instead of big block numbers, that doesn't, I need to break things down, that's. So that's what I was, and I wanna make sure I'm understanding what's being presented. Alright, does anybody else have any questions? Does anybody have a desire to move this forward? Alright.
I, I don't know, I mean, I think this year it's something like, it's not a possibility, but I think it's something definitely we should be thinking about for next year, and where we can make cuts. To make this happen, I know personally, as a public worker, it's part of why I work in the public sector is for the benefit, so I do think that's something that draws people in. So I think it's something we should be thinking about for next, or like figuring out how we can make it work for next year.
Cameron? I'll just agree, but I mean, it, it sounds like staff would reuse that, maybe this isn't the highest priority, is kind of what I'm hearing. For, for this year.
Right.
But.
Okay, but definitely something we wanted to still.
Alright, we'll go into the health reimbursement agreement.
So this is kind of a similar thing, um, so currently, we are self-insured for dental. And we allow each employee's spouse, if they're dependent, up to a thousand dollars of dental care a year. And we've realized that that's very much underutilized, um, we have a lot of staff that. You know, maybe they just do their few cleanings, or they don't go to the dentist at all, so it's a very underutilized benefit. So we were looking at what can we, how can we make that better? Uh, so we did a couple of demos with some companies and found out that. We could put that thousand dollars instead of just dental, that they could use that for dental or glasses, or even your vision. Maybe if you have some other out-of-pocket medical costs that aren't covered by our health insurance, so. The maximum cost is the same, you know, if every employee spent their thousand dollars. You know, we'd have the same liability as if every employee spent that thousand dollars here. Um, we do recognize that if we offer this HRA plan. That it would get utilized a lot more than the dental plan, and so it would cost the village more to implement this. Um, how much more, we don't know, um, I kind of, I was trying to get the, somebody has worked, but to try to. Feel like you're on, answer how much do we think this will get utilized in the origin. So, um, I, I guess another thing we would love to offer, I think it's, um, right, I think a lot of. You know, private sector businesses, maybe some public ones to offer HRA plans. So again, another benefit we researched and wanted to put before you guys, that we think it's something we would love to offer. But again, this year might not be the year.
Well, tell me how, the HRA plans are much broader than just dentists.
Correct, yeah.
So. Right, so you, it, that's, could it, does it include also, or could it still include health insurance? Because this is like a benefit, uh, buffet type style system, right?
Yes, I don't know that you can use your.
You might be able to.
Right, so we don't, we don't have deductibles, so if we had deductibles, yes, you could use this towards your deductible.
There you go. So, but in this, if we went to this, the supplemental amount above the budget is like twenty thousand dollars.
Is a complete estimate, yes.
Okay.
That we think that employees will utilize this a lot more, and it would cost the village maybe an extra twenty thousand a year.
So let me just, I, again, I'm just trying to, so currently your dental is a thousand bucks. For you, your, your partner, and every child, or just children?
All children, each individual, so yeah, if you're a family of four, your max benefit would be four thousand.
Okay, and this would be what?
Yeah, is this four thousand dollars, like in the same?
For everybody, or how is it calculated?
Uh, so, we could, that is a variable, we could, um, I think when we talked to the guy, he said, they usually just do. Employee, employee plus spouse or family, so we could say if it's just a single person, they get. You know, you could do a thousand, or you could say seven hundred and fifty, and then if it's you and your spouse, you get fifteen hundred. Um, if it's your whole family, maybe your max is three thousand, like, so you could. Tailor it differently, like, we have a lot of flexibility in setting this now.
And who monitors it and does the work?
Um, the.
So you contract with a company?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to.
But, if I understand correctly, so right now we offer a thousand dollars per person, and if they don't use it, we keep it, what you're saying now.
Well, we don't get billed, it, that's right, because it's a company again.
And this would be the same thing, like, if they don't use it, they lose it.
Right, yeah.
But, but I mean, it looks like we're only budgeting for the average use every year.
Yeah.
So it's not like there's.
Right, we're not budgeting.
Right, right, oh, right, right, that's, that's why I'm trying to, again, try to understand all the little pieces, so you actually know what's, what's going on.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't think that we had fifty thousand dollars sitting there that we could, you know, that we weren't budgeting, but no, it's way less than that.
Way less, because they're using an average of that, yeah. And, and they, well, clearly I agree, will be used more if you're expanding the usage of it, right?
Yeah.
If it's dental insurance, and now it can go to a huge thing, of course you're gonna end up spending more. But I, I guess, knowing they have the different levels, I think we should be able to pretty easily kind of calculate what the liability would be.
Yeah.
Right? So we're, is this kind of an informational thing again?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I'm just trying to figure out where we're going, so I don't wanna short anybody.
Something that we researched, we love the idea, we would love to offer it.
Okay, so, reading this, you only budgeted for sixteen thousand, but we could actually have an annual liability of twenty-two.
Yeah, so like for twenty twenty-four, I think we're gonna be over what we budgeted, I think we had a couple kids get some braces and stuff this year. Be a little over for dental this year. I think we have, you know, some younger employees now have families that might creep up a little.
Just making sure.
Right, anybody have any more questions? Alright, we'll go to number C, or letter C, I'm sorry, Jerry, you wanna come up?
Uh, you have two of them for me, uh, two different employees. Uh, when we were. Creating our. System last year, of where to place employees on a pay scale. Uh, these two were a little bit shy on time. To be in the. As it was proposed last year, one step up, um, they both now have. Put in the time, they've shown. Uh, a lot of skill sets being developed, they've uh, exhibited. Taking responsibility and. I just, I'd like to get them up to where they. Compared to what our other employees.
Can you? Uh. Talk a little bit more on, um. I guess I don't see the name there.
It's in the justification.
Oh, Jeff, okay, yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah, Jeff, can you, when you, when it says in here that he does custom fabricing. Tools and equipment, what, do other people do that, or is that kind of his, uh, a unique skill?
That's pretty much Jeff's thing.
Okay.
You didn't really have a. Fabricator, builder, prior to Jeff coming on board, we had numerous people that could. Patch things together to get by, but uh, as far as building. Like, one of the more recent projects was the rack for the UTV that Dane uses. Mike can tell you the numbers, but, and uh, he saved us quite a bit of money by building it in-house versus by.
So, he, here's, I'm gonna, is, this is my take on both of these, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna support them, but I just wanna make sure. Why I'm supporting is not that they've become more efficient, because I think that's what the longevity does, the more years you hear, you become more efficient. That's why you pay them, but it's the special skills with Jeff, it's that being able to do that, and then with. Um, Ray, and this was gonna, uh, he's. Training or has completed the training for the water treatment plant, right, is he certified, or?
No.
What is that, help me explain that one a little bit more.
Ray has become proficient enough at the sewer plant to be able to run it. Ted goes on vacation for a week.
Okay.
Two weeks, or gets sick, or whatever. Uh, no, he is not certified, he's, he's not knowledgeable of. Exactly what needs to take place if there's a drastic temperature change or high flow situation. Um, he's, he's good enough now to cover Ted for short-term needs.
And we don't, and there's nobody else besides you that probably could do it, right?
And after all these years, I'm not even sure I.
Okay, so it's, to me, those, those, you know, having special skills like that, to me, is why we should pay employees more. Right, that's where I'm covering, again, uh, becoming proficient in the sweet sweeper, well, I would think that would just be part of your job description. If that's his task, to do that, yes, as you get more, you get more efficient. And that's where I see the longevity coming in, but the skill set change, to me, is why I'm supporting these, because that's what we want. And that should get rewarded, is when people improve themselves in those skill sets that benefit the, the village. So that's voting.
When you say time, was it like the day they're hired, like the time they weren't here enough to hit the triggers, if you will?
But yeah.
Do you want the motion to be separated?
Yeah, we gotta separate, I just wanted, because both of them had things that I pulled out that I thought warranted. You know, and I just wanted to make sure the group knew why I was supporting it, it's that extra skill set that, to me, is. The, the value and, and paying someone more. Now, the question you're asking for twenty-five hundred, you know, that's up, that's up for us to decide, is that too much, too little, you know? I mean, that's where I think it comes in today, Cameron?
Uh, I wanna support these as well, but I guess this is on top of. The budget that's already seven hundred and fifty dollars for the levy limit, so this would put us over now?
Uh, at this time, it would, but we'd have to, like I say, I, I, I need, yes, it would, and we can make that contingent if we want. Um, or we can postpone this until after that discussion, whatever the group wants to do. I, there's, I have a lot of questions on the main budget to know what, how we got to the numbers we got, I just, I'm not quietly. Huh?
So I'll see how I'm all shakes out.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so if you wanna postpone this till uh, after that discussion, I'm certainly fine with that.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't think so.
Or we can.
I think we could.
Do it on contingency, I'm fine with that too.
Do we feel there's an area where we can subtract five thousand dollars to compensate these two individuals?
It all, it all, I, it all depends on what the numbers are.
I will say that these forms were filled out a couple months ago, and um. The budget, as it's presented tonight, does show um, in addition to a longevity upon cola increase. Um, that was just discussed within the last, you know, few weeks. So if that did get approved, both of these gentlemen would already be over the fifty-one thousand by like five hundred dollars, so. If what is in the budget gets approved, this is kind of a move, this would already be covered.
Well, I'm gonna. I'm gonna agree with you on the one point that there's added there, that I think, but I don't think that that is the same as this. I think this is rewarding people for increasing a skill set, which to me is much more important than the cola, so. Well, that's another, the, the, another discussion, that's what I was trying to refer to, but I didn't wanna get into it before we actually discussed it, so. Um. So what is the pleasure of, of the people, it, it, should we just postpone this till after? So what is the pleasure of of the people? It it's, should we just postpone this till after the discussion? Okay, do I have a motion to uh postpone C and D until after the first half of ten is done? All right, do I have a second?
I'll save it though.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Okay, so let's go to uh the first part of ten. So. How would you like, is there a preference you would like to do this, Bobby?
So I think what the intent of tonight's discussion was, was to talk about the. Wage and benefit budget that was given to you last time. We have, uh, Department of Health, when they met this month, um, changed that budget that we gave you last month, essentially. So the budget you were given, and then September was just a three percent. For all employees. So when we met this month, we talked about, you know, the plan that was put together last month that was, you know, accepted by the board. Where we. The longevity plus, you know, a market-based adjustment. And so we, you know, because we talked about that, we wanted to propose that um and bring it up for discussion. Basically, um. So we put everybody in, you know, their steps. The longevity step, um, and then the three point two percent cola is based on. Um, the same number that they use for expenditure restraint. So we came up with that. So again, that was just kind of a starting point for discussion.
All right, I guess I'm gonna start with process. Uh, it's process, yeah, we have the budget memo that came out at the end of June. And it stated something and it's in there that anything above that is supposed to be on a supplement. So I think anything over the three percent should have been on a supplement uh uh form, because that's our process. And it did happen uh last year. And um. So I'm 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 gonna just go and I, just so I know, cause I went through the budget memo, so let let me just, the goals that were very objective on that. With this budget, do we, are we still eligible for the expenditure uh restraint program, okay? And you've already kind of mentioned it, that um. If I'm understanding, what you have there is there's. The memo stated that everybody gets a three percent raise, honoring the longevity raise. First, and then cola to fill in to get three percent. So the question I have right now, and I wanna make sure it's very clear, so. How much above the three percent is in the current budget? That we receive? Or that we're talking about tonight?
Twenty-five thousand five hundred.
More, so the three percent is about thirty-four thousand?
Yes.
So. You're going up to twenty-five thousand dollars above that. So people, you're looking, which you're proposing or which you have in the budget, is a six point two percent raise for everybody?
Except one, yeah.
Okay. Are there any?
Well, so then, um, the budget memo also said Elizabeth and like.
Yes.
A little bit, so that includes that also.
Okay, Doug, that, okay, thank you, that's right. The money that they lost in twenty twenty-four, we're reinstating in twenty twenty-five. Okay, thank you. So are there any other? Anything that a reasonable person would say would be an increase in salary and anybody else's salary? Besides the six point two percent and the one thousand two seventy-five for Mike and Elizabeth. All right, so really, from the memo, what we're talking about is, do we wanna add another twenty-five thousand to salaries? Correct? All right, now. Um, I'm gonna ask the same question for the benefit side. Besides what we've talked about tonight, the nine percent on health. Are there any other increases in costs and what are they to the benefit side?
I mean, obviously, the retirement, social security, Medicare would go up. I'd have to. Look at the extra dollar amount that they'll make off, I can get that for you.
Okay. So so really, tonight, and and this is why, we're gonna really be talking about the three point two percent that you guys. Are proposing above the three percent that was in the budget now. All right. Anybody else have any question for Bobby before we start the discussion that that we should, information that you'd like that, you know?
Hi, buddy. Well, I feel like a crazy person, but like I'm, where did you get all this, Jay? The. Is it just in the the budget documents that are posted on the website?
Well, well, no, I'm I'm asking, cause last.
Yeah.
Last year, there were things that I didn't ask and we ended up paying that I'm pretty sure no one here knew you were. Uh approving, but, cause I didn't find out until March. So I'm just trying to be very clear that everything. That is there is open. So I knew by my budget memo with three percent of current salaries, right? So that's where I knew knew the thirty-four. That's why I was asking for the other part, because. If three percent is thirty-four thousand, how is three point two percent only twenty-five thousand? But. There must be something, you know, I just, I just wanna know what's in the budget that we need to talk about. Cause I've agreed, I I'm totally supportive of of the three percent. I just wanna know what numbers we're talking about, cause quite frankly, I'm more in favor of not doing. The three point two percent. Uh, we gave huge, uh, some people got very large wage increases last year. I think there's, again, wages across the board. I think the two employees, I think Jerry's made a good argument why they should get more. I think Elizabeth and Michael should get their money back, but after that, I'm pretty much at at the three percent right now. I don't think six point two is reasonable for the taxpayers. And they're using the three point two percent as what the cola is for. The eligibility, so they think inflation, their number increase is three point two. So I think we're two tenths off of that at three percent. So we're right in the ballpark of what it is. Six point two is much higher. Go ahead.
No, the, the three point two cola raise on top is actually another thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, I just, I noticed my uh, what I did.
Okay, thirty-five thousand. Well, basically, that's what I'm saying, didn't, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, but formula was wrong on my spreadsheet. I just take that value.
So, yeah, the first three percent is a thirty-four eight, the next one is like thirty-five with the three point two. I emailed Bobby earlier today or on Sunday, cause I was reading and I was. Wanting to kind of delve more into how exactly did we implement the longevity stuff that we've been talking about last year? And the paid packages and how those were actually showing up in the budget, cause I wanted to actually see the action will be passed. So then, earlier today, she sent me an Excel spreadsheet that basically showed the numbers that she used per employee. For what their raises were, and going through that. It's, it's, it was what we're saying, is the step increase of three percent and the cola of of three point two. With this, with the way she's implementing it, I had some questions on this, which, uh, if you want me to delve into this or not, I think that the. Step raises are not in line with our longevity program that we set up last year. She was citing in her email the staff plan that they came up on how their steps were, but I. Thought that the longevity plan that was enacted later on that Jay worked with, with the nine steps, one through nine, with the three, 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 two to two, one, one, one. And how it said on the first of January of twenty twenty-four, employees with so many years were placed into certain steps. And so with that being said, say an employee over fifteen years would have been placed as a step three on January first of twenty twenty-four. That would mean with them having over the five-year requirement, they would move to a step four, which would only give them a two percent longevity raise this year. But in the spreadsheet, Bobby was using a three percent longevity raise for those employees, and we were having differences of what plan. Was what step they were at according to what plan. So there was some confusion on my part, being a board member, with how Bobby was implementing it. Using either the the old staff plan, which, as I said, I thought that kind of. Went away when we went to the longevity piece. The only thing inside of the staff plan that I could see being carried forward was, I believe, inside of there, there was talk of a cola increase, which is where. Think that was coming from. It's all kind of sort of hazy, but that's where that came from, I think, cause that's not in the longevity plan at all. So that's gonna be included as a policy, it's kind of. I don't know, I don't know if we need to make another policy or what. So that's where all this was coming from. I also questioned the three point two cola increase. She was citing the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, which is fine, cause I don't know if we ever really decided, but I know this year, social security is only getting a two point five. Cost of living adjustment, and that was where I also was like, where did you get three point two? Cause I thought it was only two point five, because that's what standard. Federal cost of living adjustment was, just things I've been thinking about as I've been looking at the budget. And it's just kind of out there for us to talk about. We. Wanna deeper dive into if the step program is working the way we want to and how. Or if we want to implement cola raises and what. Number, source of information for those it comes from.
I was gonna respond to the um, the step discrepancy. Um, so in the staff plan. We showed an employee was hired at step one and they went to step ten. And so then we proposed, you know, so someone who was here, zero to five years started at step one. And if you're here for five to fifteen years, you started at, you you got put in step two and fifty, so it's at step three. Then, when the policy was written in twenty twenty-four, it kind of renumbered the steps like it. You didn't hit step one until you've been here a year and you maxed out at step nine. So it's just, it's a labeling thing. And so that's where this um. That's why. Match what we were intending, so there is a little.
Uh, here's the thing. In the memo, and that's why I did the three percent, thi- this whole thing on. Cola and all mixing up, it it, that's why I picked the three percent. No one gets more than three percent on any longevity. Uh, rates, all right, so it covers it. My goal was, if you remember the memo, it says, everybody will get a uh, a three percent raise. With honoring the longevity first, which would be three percent, two percent. In where we are right now, and then the makeup to get to three percent would be cola. That's how we get to the three percent. So it's straight up, it's 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 simple in the sense that. We are looking at giving employees. At least in the memo, what I recommend, and I still stand by it, a three percent raise this year. Now, Michael brings up the IRS is using three point two for the. Meeting the requirement for the restraint program. Social Security is using two point five, the three percent, if you think about it, is right in the middle of that, so it's, it stays in with what. The the cola is. So um, I thought it was very. Uh, easy to calculate and less confusing. Last year was an extremely confusing budget process. So this year, I wanted to make it very clean and objective, and there were, I don't know, I had eight different goals there. We've achieved quite a few of them, um, that's in that, in that memo. Uh, so the bottom line tonight. Is what do we want to do as a raise for individuals? The the across-the-board raise, that's what we're really talking about right now.
Joe, one more comment.
Sure.
For the memo, it said a total of three percent to honor longevity first, and then the difference is cola.
Yep.
The only reason I wouldn't agree with that is I don't think. Employees should get different cola raises. Like, if I, my longevity is two percent and Carly's is three, it's not fair that I get a one percent cola raise and she doesn't get a cola raise. So cola should be the same percent.
I would argue then, last year, when you gave fair market raises, you weren't consistent with everybody. They were very different.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm I'm. And now we're, we're doing it. So to me, you're good.
That makes sense to me, though, that a, an inflationary raise should be the same, and that's how it is.
Well, the inflationary raise is three percent.
Right.
That's how you look at it, how we get there. Because.
But. But then we pass a longevity policy and it's like we're completely ignoring it.
No, we're not.
Yeah, we are. If we're giving them a cola and we're ignoring the longevity, we aren't doing both of them. That is absolutely what's happening. Why pass a longevity if we're just, if if the longevity is, you know. It, I know that isn't given every year, but if always, you're just gonna max out at the cola, then why even have the longevity policy?
So basically, we're just giving, like, you're proposing just giving a cost of living raise then.
That's basically it. And the whole entire longevity policy isn't being followed, or isn't being used.
You can, you can interpret it that way if you want, you know, and I understand why, where it's coming from, that, you know, technically, you know. Perfect world, you'd have the two separate, they'd merge together, right? So I'm trying to, to be fair with everybody, to give them the same, because. I wasn't gonna bring it up, but last year, I mentioned the number of times where the numbers didn't match. You know, I brought up the supplement and said it didn't match. And I made a huge mistake by making assumption on that, so I didn't pursue it. And I ended up, uh, cause it was so chaotic. I just wanted to get, and then my decision was to make the adjustments in twenty twenty-five. All right, because I assumed the air was due to the confusion in the longevity. And in March, I found out that that was not the case. Uh, there were market adjustment raises that I'm pretty sure no one in this room knew. Were what we voted for, because I'm, I think I'm pretty good with numbers, and I caught off right off the bat that the numbers. Were not coming matching up. In my opinion, and this is just my opinion, with our policy, when we did those uh supplements. If you remember last year, there was a cola raise, there was a longevity raise, and then there's nothing, but when you tally them up, the numbers. There should have been a third category there on market rate increase, because that's what actually happened. Um, so, like I say, I'm trying to, so this year, I'm trying to. Clean it up a bit and get us on where we understand, and you can make a huge argument that you're right, that. There are different rates of cola, and that's to get it to three percent, but that was the only way. I felt I could do it in a, a way that everybody would understand instead of trying to, because I don't think any of us. Had an interest, and that's why I didn't bring it up early, that we would take any money away from employees. And I'm looking at, say what you want, and I don't know what people are thinking is. But we're at seven hundred and fifty dollars under levy limit, which to me is extremely unacceptable. If we don't do the three point two. And we give these other two employees their raise, now we're about thirty-one thousand under levy limit that. Again, is much better and probably acceptable to go into uh the twenty twenty-five uh year. So, there's a lot of variables that are playing into this, and if you break them down and you say we're ignoring this. I would disagree, we're honoring everybody's longevity. I don't think it's fair just to do longevity, so I'm trying to make it fair by filling that on a legitimate way of doing it. With the cola to fill up to three percent. So. Uh, you know, again, this is everybody's decision here, but this is where I'm coming from, and. It's not something that just came up. Obviously, that memo was written back in in June, so. Um I think we do have to start building a gap between what we're spending and uh. Lovey limit, because there will be things coming up that will need to eat some of that up. In the future. Judy.
Um I think this year is a tough year because that levy is knocking, so we have to look at ways to cut. Um I think you're beating yourself up that you missed it last year with the with the wages, but it isn't just you. Every one of us missed that last year. So we're all just as guilty seeing the extra. So I do feel as far as the three percent, if we did that, um the three percent and then also gave Jerry his. His supplement asking um. I think we're good. I think we already have to stick to it, because we have to stay under that levy limit this year. And give us some room to agree.
Michael, can you give more explanation? I mean, you don't have to speak in a specific, but of how you feel and what you've missed. I want more verification on that. Like I like I wanna I want an example of what you're describing. So wait, if we need to. Make certain adjustments because.
No, we're not. I I'm not, or I'm not saying that. I brought this one up new a couple of times. What this shows is what it was, and it has line items. When I did the math, the numbers didn't come up. The the wage at the end was bigger than the percentages of the starting point.
Okay, so.
So so I I I miss, let's say the person was gonna get a three percent increase, right? So they got the three percent, and I can do the math for three percent, but when it came to at the bottom, and then. We'll let Bobby explain where how they come up. I don't know how the formula was used to come up, but I recognize that the numbers did not match. So when I looked at this and I did it, this one said it was only uh nine percent, but the numbers showed a ten point four percent. So there was a difference of one point four percent that I couldn't account for.
That.
And this was with all of almost all of them.
So that was the salary increase was ten point four and they got the sal- the the adjustment.
Well, we'll we'll do, but let me just, so so there was this difference. So I brought it up a couple of times and no one said anything. And with the chaotic part of the budget. I made a mistake that cops never make, and that is to make an assumption. I assume. That because of the confusion with the longevity, which there was, that that was a mathematical. Thing with the longevity, alright? So in March, because I decided, instead of bringing it up because we were already. Right up against the budget, if remember, we voted the the final budget down, we had that small group get together the next Monday. And then we had a meeting rights to get it, because we had to get it, because it was two days before we had a file. I didn't throw it in, and I decided that I'll make adjustments in twenty twenty five. Because I thought it was a map on air and in in calculation, so we could adjust it, right? In March, when we met. Didn't take long, and Bobby explained it, that they had done market adjustments. Uh for the wages, and then they did the longevity and the the cola depending with a maximum of seven thousand increase.
Right.
So then I knew that's where the air came in. My feeling is, it should have been another line item here that said market adjustment. Raise. That's my feeling, because that would have, then I would have been able to do the ma- the math would have worked out.
You're saying the error was because they did the market adjustment and then applied the raises to that adjustment.
Well, they didn't.
Or the percentage increases to the adjustment.
Whatever number is on there is what they actually got.
Right, but it's different than what the what their salary is and what the ro- raise was supposed to be. That's on here.
You're just looking at, you're saying the percent, the the percentage increase that's listed there.
Because at no point you got more than what's on the sheet.
Because we we went, I have a spreadsheet from that meeting that you probably had, and the numbers, the total, at least matched everything in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, it ma- matches, but would, were you aware that they did a market adjustment on on salaries?
I I I'm not sure what you're talking about, because all they did was they they they.
No, we.
They they wasn't like a flat market adjustment, everyone. They put people into the the grades.
No, grade has nothing to do with the salary.
You're right, Cam.
No, but that's where this is wrong. The grade tells you what you're at in the salary range. It doesn't tell you your salary. Your salary is within the range within that grade. And we did adjust the range of the grades. Yes, we did that. Where the person came from twenty three to twenty four, and I guess I would like. Go ahead, tell the group what formula you use to get people starting their market adjustment rates.
There was no set percentage.
Right?
We had the table. And.
Um some employees jumped up a lot more, okay.
I understand that.
Placed him in a spot on this table, and then like some people were capped, like they maybe should have been here, but we. You know, it wasn't feasible, so there was a cap, and everyone got a minimum of the three percent. But yes, I think what Jay's trying to say is the supplemental sheet should have had another line explaining more about this point on. So I, yes.
So with that in mind, I was trying to make. It's simple this year with what the raises are. So my, like I said, I I think three percent is reasonable on where we're at and. How much we spent. You gotta remember, last year we spent a hundred and one thousand dollars on wages. Triple on what we're doing now. We, I believe, and like they said, they, we've moved people up. To market, we gave cola, and we gave longevity. I think there needs to be. Uh a stabilization here.
So I, assuming the spreadsheet that I have from last year is. Heck, you're looking at it is um like I like what we did last year. I guess Bobby explained to me this additional three point two percent then. That's maybe what I'm confused about.
So essentially, it was the same, like. Everyone who qualifies to move a step gets to move a step.
Yep.
And then everyone gets the same percentage cola raise.
Okay. And that was. I, as I understand it, that was how we had set it up, but I, we did also note that like cola might be. A little lower with all of the longevity increases as well.
You guys could stop that number, it doesn't have to.
If if you really wanna know what the what it is, is we can control also the longevity. That's, which I I wasn't in favor of, but it's, the language is in there, the board has discretion, if they wanna give the longevity or not, which. I was, I was actually in favor of removing that. But I don't, no, it was not removed out, not of that of the.
Why, I'm. What if, what if like you wanna go Jayless to take it full out? Not longevity, people would still go as their staff, but the board would decide that there was a hole in it. That's what I.
Well, but that's how I think it should be, but that's not how it reads.
I think it reads that we have full control over the budget. If you give anyone any raise we want to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I I would agree, but generally you're going to honor that, which is why. In my memo, I said that we're honoring the cola, the, I mean, I'm sorry, the longevity first, because I want that to kick in. I want it so next year we're only talking about cola, but I think this year I needed to get. People online and understanding what's happening. So I did a straight, straight across. Elizabeth?
I think staff is just concerned, but if we only do the longevity. Okay, which it represents is, we appreciate that, but if that's less than what is. Staff is behind again, like we're taking a step backward when what we're trying to do, what it was. Recruit them, pretend to them. And we're just saying we better not want to be behind if not.
Okay, but just to answer your question, the what we have for cola numbers is two point five and three point two. You're at three percent, so you're right in the middle. So you're making that part of it. Now, where where we're labeling it from makes a difference. Judy, then the chief.
So I'm confused. So she's saying the cola of the three percent and then longevity, so you get six percent, is what you're saying, or you're not? So what are you saying? I'm sorry.
That is what we were proposing.
Right, it's six.
That's what's, and that's what's turning in the budget.
Or six point two.
That's what's correct.
Chief.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand what you, what Jay is saying, you know, having a year of like. To catch up and try to figure things out, I think the department has. And that was a discussion, but I do also remember in multiple meetings continually hearing Jay and multiple members saying that. One thing is longevity and one thing is cost of living. So I think at some point we really do need to keep that apart. Because I agree with Michael, then why have a policy of longevity if you're always gonna be like, well, we're just gonna cap it off at three. Cent or whatever, because you're gonna honor that longevity, and I feel like the board is ready to do that. And then then play with the other, so I agree with with Sarah also that if. There should be a separation, and and that's really what was intended in the long run of that plan.
Right, and 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 I'm not gonna disagree with that, it's just that. This year, I felt we needed to do an adjustment, and three percent was fair. On what it was, and I just wanted to get there in a clear way of how to get there. Because not everybody's gonna get the three percent um. Longevity. So you're gonna still have that difference. If you hold steady on cola. You're not gonna hold steady on longevity. I gotta believe there's people, I know for sure, anybody in that uh fifteen or more should only be at the two percent. They're onto the step four of the policy, and that's two percent. It's three, 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 two, 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 one, 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 and we started people at step three, so they're in step four, which would be a two percent.
Well, we didn't start everyone at step.
No, 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 I understand that. Some people will get zero, right? Anybody who's been here in that four year, because. It goes, I'm pretty sure it's. It jumps from three to five, so anybody with four year doesn't get a longevity, and I think from five to seven, it jumps, so no one in the sixth year. So what I'm saying is, the, you you know, if you're looking at everybody gets the same, the only way to do it is what I have proposed. Where everybody gets a three percent, we honor the longevity first and then fill in the difference with the whole, with the cola raise. And you're technically separating, I mean, you're right, there's difference, but there's gonna be difference on either one of those. It don't matter how you cut it.
I have a curiosity, since you, you know, sent me the spreadsheet, and if it gets. They converted or turned into the longevity plan, meaning. A fifteen year employee now would be receiving a two percent longevity because they would have started at step three. And they would be eligible for step four, which is a two percent raise this year. How that would affect this, like if it was adjusted to coincide with the longevity plan? That make sense?
Well, you, she would take one percent off of that person.
Yes, specifically someone who's over fifteen percent. Right now in here, their step increases are all three percent. Someone who's over fifteen years with the village would only be getting a two percent longevity raise this year, because they're at step three in twenty twenty four and on January first, twenty twenty five. Move to step four, which in the longevity plan only gives a two percent raise for twenty twenty five, but that's not what. The spreadsheet is doing right now. I'm saying if it was adjusted to that, so that. Everyone is adjusted, and so they're in the correct step, as was written, the way I read the longevity plan. See how the numbers come out there, and if the cola raises then adjusted to two and a half percent, how would the whole thing? What's the savings in doing that?
I would answer.
I know, but that's what I'm saying.
But that's a good question. That's a good question.
Like, if we're gonna have a longevity plan, I wanna see them correctly, the way I do it correctly in the spreadsheet, and then see what the lower cola rate gives, because. It could. I don't know how much it could.
Well, you're still, okay, you're you're looking at a minimum, the minimum someone would be would be four point five, right?
Right. Okay, I don't know what it's gonna do.
Well, think about it, two percent plus two and a half percent.
Fifteen thousand dollar savings. I mean, we're then right next to the levy limit.
No, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, you can in your head calculate what it would be.
Well, it better be next to heaven.
Yeah, no, that's that's fine.
Two point five on top of the colas and extra twenty nine. So if you did the stuff, you know, their longevity plus a two and a half percent cola is an extra twenty nine.
Total for everyone?
Yeah. That makes sense, because it's a half.
Huh, okay.
The half percent difference. Well, sub- sub tenths, right? Three point two to two point five.
I don't, yeah, I don't know. Often over here, you're you're trying to. Trying to adjust it so that what the longevity is what. You know, it should be and what a lesser bullet would be, to how much savings would be. I mean, I understand you're. Speaking about how you want a flat three, but.
No, no, I'm I'm just trying to help you do the math.
But not all longevity are three percent.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, that some of the long, some of these might just. Longevity's might turn into zero percent, like if you say if they, if they're for their fourth year, they aren't getting any longevity.
Let's say everybody's two percent, that's one percent of, it's one third of thirty four thousand. Right, so it's eleven thousand saving.
Okay.
So you know that would be the most, right? And you know it's gonna be less than that.
Okay.
So I mean, we can do some of that, I mean, without having to do everything individually, there are, I mean, you can ballpark it.
Right, I got you.
Well, I guess here here's a quick, I I I guess let's. I mean, do people feel that we should be giving bigger than three percent raises? I mean, I don't wanna. Make people do all these kind of calculations and stuff, if people are saying, hey, three percent, how we get there doesn't matter, or. Four percent, I don't care how we get there. What are people's feelings, or do you wanna do it where? Hey, let's just do straight what the policy is for longevity and then this for cola? What what is, I mean, what are people looking at? So I don't want Bobby to have to do a million calculations. Get some idea of what the group is looking for, you know?
Doug?
Uh I guess I'll just make a couple of quick comments. I mean, I have always felt in the last years that we've. Done a lot of work, we've tried to investigate, you know, where we should be for wage ranges, and we need them to be fair. And then at the end of the day, if those steps and those ranges are right, it makes a cost of living raise much easier. The and that that's something we did a lot of work on last year. I thought we. I thought we did a pretty generous raise last year, so I assumed we were gonna go back. To get on more of the cost of living, and inflation is coming down. A lot of companies. Just put out the percent, and it's part of a huge budget, and that's what people get. Then those managers have discretion, say it's a, let's just use three percent. Say that's the three percent pool, but they can do anybody from flat to five percent, and they have to justify it, and that takes more work. That means. Being an engaged manager, differentiating your people, and that can be harder to do in municipal work. Um I think there's always a balancing act between good efficiency for the taxpayers and then what our great employees do for us. Um so, you know, I know there are tough things to talk about, but I thought we were generous last year. I want to continue. To treat our people fairly, both the longevity and people who've done great work and the people who are still young to call. And there is a balancing act between really, really good benefits. That come along with being part of a public employee and the the payees. And I think we've moved much further ahead in payees. We still have very good benefits, so. I mean, I want to make it as simple for employees to understand as the board and just move the budget forward, so. I I know for private industry. The three percent was what Springs used and other places that I've worked in the past have used. I'm just using that as an example. I I think, I think the process should be easier. I'm looking forward to that too, but. You know, I thought we took a pretty generous step. I spent a lot of time on it last year, but I thought this year was going to be more straightforward. I do think it's a challenge, right? Down the longevity piece, but the whole key is to have those ranges active. Where they are in their job. If they're a department head, they're up here a little more, if they're uh. Um you know. Public works, they're here, and this is what they do, and as they gain skills, they gain the opportunity to add more value to the village and make more money. Simple as we can do that, I would like that.
Set a question, can I ask a question?
Alright, Chief.
Um so if I'm understanding, Michael, are you, if your thought process is that. We worked on longevity, so we should stick to longevity, because of the, because those adjustments may fit people in their pockets, right?
Right, certain time periods.
And then this year should have been maintain those longevity, whatever those were that we agreed with, and then we should only be working.
And then we should only be looking at cost of living adjustment. Is that what you're saying? Because we shouldn't be messing with the longevity anymore. Because it's, it's already in policy and that's what we agreed to. So, so shouldn't just the vote be no cost of living? We're just sticking with the, what we already agreed this year? I think what Jay is saying, that is he's trying to add to those buckets by saying three percent. If you're, if that's what you're getting as longevity pay, then you're capped there. If you're getting two percent, then you're getting an additional one percent because the cost we did. So, so you're saying that we should just stick to longevity? Because that's what we agreed to. So whoever got those adjustments last year, that's why they're only getting two percent, because they got up to seven thousand dollar cap.
That's not what I said. I said we should. Do the longevity pay. So if someone's getting two because they moved up to a step four. And not the three percent. And then I said, it also investigate rather than using the three point two call the two point five, we're getting both of those is what I was saying. Since. One is, one is the benefit for longevity, which is we're trying to benefit longevity employees. And then we're also trying to keep them up with the cost of living if we're trying to retain people. I mean, it might be a few more calculations, but there's twenty people here. It's not, it's gonna take like ten hours to figure out what their new longevity step is.
And I understand it because it's like, if you didn't. Qualify for the seven thousand dollar cap last year, well, that's why in your history, you only be, should only be two percent. While you'll just continue to that role because they're.
Exactly, if somebody, yeah, then they don't get a.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand. Okay, thank you, Bernie.
No.
But that's, that's just me. I mean, we're passing policies, we, you know, maybe we should try to, you know.
Michael, I'm gonna correct you again. We are honoring that policy, alright? Let's, if we're gonna do the facts, let's do it fact. No one is getting more than three percent required by policy to get more than three percent on longevity. We are honoring that. That is number one. If you read the memo, that was my number one point. Alright, so it's the difference is the cola. Everybody's getting their longevity. Right? So don't say we're not following policy. We are following policy. The difference is. Mine is the cola is adjustable to making the cap, just like they cap the seven thousand last year. I'm capping it at three percent. So the adjustment for the cola is, that's what what, that is what's happening. Alright, so we are honoring. And it's been like that from day one that memo went out. We're honoring the longevity. That is important. We passed it, we spent a lot of time on it. It's a benefit. We should keep it and honor it. And that has been done. The only thing that we're talking about right now that's not, that would be adjustment is the cola rates. Now, I'm hearing from you, you think the cola should be straight and Sarah kind of thing is straight two and a half all the way across. I I'm, I'm disagreeing in the sense that I think there should be a cap at three percent. If someone gets nothing for uh longevity because of where they fall in that. Then they should get to me three percent. I want all my employees to get three percent to stay up with. Uh, the inflation number. And I think three percent is a reasonable with the numbers of two point five and three point two. You know, we're not that far off. Three is right there as an average on the high end. So that's what is being on the table. Alright, and you can certainly disagree with the cola part of it. I'm fine. But I'm I'm not gonna say we're not following the longevity, because we are to the T. There isn't one thing on there that we haven't followed. Go on, Sarah.
I disagree because I like that. I guess that, that doesn't make sense that everyone's getting the same raise, but you're saying we're following the longevity. Because the point of it is that. You're getting that raise. So like to me, it makes sense to keep the two separate. I really think we should give the longevity and then we should look at, we could see how much that costs and how much more willing we're. More money we're willing to put into raises and then that's percentage we calculate for the. Cost of living. Because it, it seems strange that if someone's getting a two percent raise and someone else getting three percent, well, they're still going to both get. A three percent raise. Because you're giving one percent, right?
In in general, I would agree with you, but because of what happened last year, I'm trying to make some adjustment. Alright, um, and I think it's hard to say that. People, the village after we gave raises into double digits last year, we're gonna be giving raises up in the five, six percent. I just, I I I can't support that. That's too high. Especially with the the what we've spent money in the past. And it's not just last year, it's the year before. We've made, like Doug said. A huge effort in bringing wages up. And it's time now that we stabilize. And I and I don't disagree with your argument, and I'm fine with that with next year. But if that's the, what the, what people are going, I'm going to look at no cola raise, just the longevity raise. You know, that, that's the other option out there, right? And I don't think that's fair. So I I tried to do what I thought was fair with the conditions and the variables that we had facing us. Now, like I say, this is good for everybody, as long as everybody. Has a clear understanding and speaks what's actually happening. And I understand where you guys are looking at the two separate. I still think I'm doing it separate as a, but I'm using a cap. That's the only difference. I put a cap on it. Just like they did last year with the raises. They did a cap. So that's where the difference is.
I have a question, because I don't recall. Why was the twelve seventy five given back to Mike and Elizabeth?
If you remember when we uh, we, the budget did not pass and there were. I'd have to look at the memo, but one of the concerns, when we came up with what needed to happen. There was a shortage of money. We didn't have enough to do it. So I know Elizabeth was part of that group. And she volunteered to give up her this amount. And then Mike volunteered to give up his amount so we could balance the budget. So I think it's only fair, and again, I thought it was fair that they should get their money back. Alright, they were. They looked at the bigger picture and did things for the better in, of all employees in the village. So. I believe I I put that in that we could afford. So that, to me, is a top priority. That they get that back. They were willing to give that up last year. They didn't have to. They were willing to do it. I feel obligated that this board should give it back to them. We can afford it now and they should get it back.
So was that? See, this is where we were capping, people were being capped at seven thousand dollars. Was this deducted from that seven thousand dollars? That would have been the.
Whatever, whatever you guys, whatever was in the final budget. In the final budget that was turned down, they both gave up twelve seventy five.
Okay, so you didn't get your max at the seven, like what was, that that's my question. This wasn't like. Like you weren't supposed to get eighty two and you said, oh, this, you, it was re- deducted from the map from the seven thousand dollar cap. Okay, that was.
Yeah, it had to be within the budget.
Well, that's, that's what it was.
Well. What do we wanna do with this?
We do have a question in the chat. I just wanna, it's from Becky. So she wanted to know if you are in between a step, for example, five to seven. If you are in your sixth year, you wouldn't get the three percent longevity.
Correct. That is, that is correct. It wouldn't be a, there's not a longevity, but. What I have proposed, they would, they would get a three percent cola.
Wait.
So you're basically using a cola.
Well, you wouldn't.
Yeah, to get it.
That'd be like a two percent rate.
No, six years you wouldn't get anything. There's breaks. Cameron?
No one's at that step right now, because we bucketed everyone into the.
For companies that, yeah.
Oh, nobody's saying that. Yes, yes, and.
If there was a year where somebody didn't get a longevity.
Well, but I I thought we, wasn't the first category one to five years? Yeah, first was one to five and then six to uh fifteen and over fifteen, right? So if we had an employee that was at the five year, they would be going into the sixth year, so they would get one then.
But they would have been starting at step one, and step two is having two years and you would get a three percent raise. They started. They would start at step one if they're in that first category.
Well, well, not necessarily. It depends on how long they were. They were here five years. They would be in that step and six would be their next step.
No.
No, or they'd be on step two.
They'd be, yeah, they'd be going to step two and getting a three percent.
Gotcha, I see what you're saying, yes.
That's what I'm talking about on the spreadsheet. The steps are not like.
Gotcha, I understand what you're saying, yes.
Right, I don't have employees of the steps that match to the cost.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. And so, without like questions coming from where I was like looking at this, I was like.
The answer to that question is still, yes, that would be a potential. And that will come up as we move forward in this.
Well, absolutely. And that's where. I think Sarah and I are talking about like, you know, when do we get to a process where, you know, everyone's getting a cola? And then if you get a longevity, it's extra bonus money, because that's what that's supposed to be. That was the whole entire idea.
Yeah, I know, I agree with you. I I would say.
Do we implement?
I would probably say, I would.
This happens.
I would say it's probably in the next couple, next couple of years. Once we get, once we get things worked out. You gotta remember which, we we jump people in, right? If if we were gonna do this how, the cleanest way, we would have put everybody in their current steps. And people with over fifteen would have got their eighteen percent increase. Then we wouldn't be having this discussion. That was gonna be an expensive way and everybody agreed that that was too expensive to do.
That, so that, that's my question then is, I I'm concerned about the person who this year should be getting that bump. Essentially, they're not really getting that because they're just getting the the three percent raise that everyone is getting. So it, to me, it feels more like it's a cola raise with a freeze on.
Yeah, you're getting a cola raise and your, and your step raise is just, you're skipping it. You just move up. Wait, so you're gonna move to step three and you just jumped over.
I don't know if I can think that when you, I can make the same argument. Everybody's doing their step raises.
I'll try and say that, maybe a different way that can be helpful. So every job. Has a value in the range. Like at Springs, there were labor grades. Your labor grade one, two, entry level, nine, ten, your maintenance, you you add more value, you make more money. The range has to be accurate. So I thought that's what we were doing last year when we took this big step. The bigger raises, the higher percentages up to seven thousand. I thought we were getting our ranges right. If your ranges are right. Then you're gonna move more towards the cost of living part of it. If your ranges are right, you're hiring people into the right staff. And then when they want to earn more money, they get skills like learning the wastewater treatment or moving up to another job in the range.
Well, but see, you're right on that, but that's more tied to grade.
I I I agree.
The longevity parts is separate.
But we're trying, we're getting confused on both things. We we want to give, I I think I hear people saying. I want a longevity rate to spend the cost of living.
Okay, let's, let's. So let's just make this simple. What is, what do people feel is a reasonable? Increase in wages this year? Is one. And number two, what do you believe is the gap we should have? Between what we're spending and the levy limit? Because those two. It really then doesn't matter how we get there, right? I mean, we can, but let's just, I'm trying to speed this up a little bit so we move forward at least somewhere. And then we can do some language to. Make people feel comfortable with it. So that is what I guess I'm going to ask everybody. To tell me, we'll go first around what you think is a reasonable raise for this year for employees. Cody, I'll let you go first.
I wouldn't think anything more than four and a half percent. I think you gotta stay underneath that regardless if it's longevity. But they took four some other year up against the levy limit. It's kind of.
Okay, Sarah?
Uh, I mean, I guess right now it's kind of hard to say. I I want to be able to fund it, so to say.
Well, no, but let's just go first, because this is what we need. I I I need to hear, because then we can do the math.
I I don't know, I think. I guess three percent feels very low to me personally.
Okay, what is, what is, what are you comfortable with?
I mean, I think, well, that's, I guess it's hard to.
I guess I'd rather see the numbers first.
Well, well, I can't give you the numbers until I hear which yours. I I wanna, I wanna go around to see if we're in the ballpark. So what, what would be a reasonable raise that you would think?
Um.
You don't have to hold to it, just a.
No, that's why, like, I guess, I guess I would like to see at least four and a half percent raise.
Alright, Cameron?
Three percent.
Alright, Michael?
Um, best one.
No, no, no. I just want a number right now.
Right. Four and a half.
Four and a half. Judy?
Three.
Alright, I'm three. Cody, what, how mu- how much gap do you think we should have between the the limit and our spending? Give me a number, just round number.
Twenty five thousand.
Twenty five thousand. Sarah?
I'm not comfortable giving a number right now. I I would like some more numbers.
But. It, okay, you don't, I I guess I'm just trying to look at what the gap you think is a reasonable gap to have.
I guess I, I just don't know right now.
Okay, fifty grand. Cameron?
I also don't know.
Okay. Michael?
I didn't know there was an action.
Five dollars. Okay?
Okay, I'm a banker. I'm gonna say a hundred.
Okay, yeah, and I'm, I'm in the, I'm definitely, the minimum would be fifty dollars, okay? Alright, well, that gives a, that's a starting point.
Wait, was that a hundred or a hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand. I need a question. I don't, I don't like, like being right there. I I've been on this, I don't like.
Alright, well, now I have, we have some numbers here, right? So, the question is, do you want to figure this out tonight? Or I guess we could put it in at the November meeting, but we'll have to for sure decide, because you're gonna bring all the funds back, right? At the November meeting? So we'd have to decide, but we can come up with some proposals. Unless you want. I'm more than happy to agree sports being used, but we can do the numbers otherwise. Otherwise, we can bring something for November and you guys can all think about it and run the numbers yourself.
Okay, one question. Can we ask staff if there's any other place we can cut? To, to bring it down? Is there any other cut place, any other place that we can cut? They don't have to answer us tonight, but can they come back with those?
It's a fine thing too.
Is there any other place we can cut so we can do more, is what I'm asking. If the, and not tonight, I don't want the questions tonight, but can they think about it?
Alright.
Okay, I see.
Go ahead, Michael.
So. Oh, is everything in the budget? Are all the numbers in? Is EMS budget in there? Spire in there, state aid, et cetera?
Yeah, all of them are in.
Okay, I'm just making sure that.
Which is bad, it's usually not.
Right, that's what, that wasn't.
Not that direct or at all.
What, these things are.
The fire is.
Fire. EMS, I, we'll, we'll see. I mean, they gave us the numbers and we'll see, but I don't think we'll make budget this year either.
Uh, just a question. Instead of cuts, is there a way to talk about increasing?
Sure, that's what's on the other side.
I remember the game, yeah.
So, okay.
Yep. Either side.
So. Subject questions. How far away from the levy, levy limit were we last year?
Thirteen thousand.
Thirteen, okay.
Right, that's the number I remember.
That sounds about right, yeah.
Okay, I didn't. Sorry. So, thirteen.
So, we we will do it, but people have to start thinking about. What they're comfortable. Now, the levy limit and our budget, that is a financial. Decision that has, shouldn't be really tied to all the other stuff. It's what are you comfortable with? Making the village financially stable in case something happens. That's, that's what that, because you cannot go over that, no matter what happens. So that is a, a solid number. So, okay. So what, are are people okay? With moving this to November? Or do you wanna spend the next couple hours tackling it here? I think we could give staff some time. You guys some time to figure it out. You've heard where your colleagues are coming from, so.
I'm wondering if we should have a meeting. Before, that like board member, board meeting with just like this topic to hammer out.
I'm okay with that.
Because if, if we get to the same place in the November meeting and we're stuck, like.
It won't be stuck, because we'll take a vote. Someone will have to throw a motion out there. We'll keep throwing motions out until someone passes.
Because the budget has to be in soon after that, right?
Uh, November, December, last year, if you remember.
It was December fifth, I guess.
Yes, so.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just.
Well, no, think about it, is everybody comfortable then doing that, do you, how many people raise your hand if you want a special meeting, it would be the second Monday of November?
Just me?
No, no, I, I'm okay with that, I, I, I'll go with whatever the group says. Okay.
I mean, and, and if that's the case, I can just spend some time with Bob or something, I don't know if that's on.
Chucker.
After the.
Yeah, all right, do I have a question? Go ahead, go ahead.
In this year's budget, which items, because you always do like your tabulation on amounts, which items were the large amounts that went up this year? From last year, like health insurance. So like, that's what I'm asking, like, what were our large wide item increments?
Oh boy, I don't have that.
Well, was there like a hundred of them, or was it like this?
I, I, my brain, my brain was just focused on salaries and benefits, so I. I, I, I don't know.
Not a whole lot went sky high.
Well, because we kept the, so how much did our levy link up from last year to this year, I guess? Like, just the raw levy limit, I'm just curious about what that involved.
It was two point six, right? Point eight, two point six, and you get sixty percent of that for the eligibility for the spring. Plus the three point two percent, that's, and if we made that, so that's what the budget. Is within, because. At least that's what they told us that we're eligible for it. For next year, so. That, at least that's what I read, it's sixty percent of your new construction and three point two percent for, for inflation.
Right. I can send in some questions, but.
Okay, I, I, if we. Everybody cool with a, a meeting the second Monday of November?
It's Veterans Day.
What's that?
It's Veterans Day, it's a federal holiday. But you just.
Well. I won't be here. Okay, you're not gonna be here? Okay, um, we're not gonna take action, obviously, we're just gonna work things out. Are you comfortable with us working something out, or? I mean, no, this is, this is extremely important, and as you see, there's a lot of difference of opinions here, so. It, it's important that everybody gets the information and, and we're comfortable with what's going on, you know, there's some variables on it, so. Okay. All right, let's uh plan on that, we'll do six o'clock again and. We will, uh, this is what we'll.
Yeah, Veterans Day.
Oh, yeah, the whole.
Oh, that's right, well.
That's what he said.
Well, no, it's Veterans Day, but that, we're not.
No, but, that, that, my wife does a P D.
Oh, okay, okay, I mean, Veterans Day, yes, people get off, but we can still meet, all right, so that doesn't work, does uh?
No, do it.
No, because, no, people can't do it.
Like the one who was calling for, I couldn't come on.
That's what, there's, there's, so now we're down to only four people and. Who knows what's gonna happen, one doesn't show, we can't meet anyway. All right, when, are you back on the Tuesday?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Oh, are you back? No? Well, Tues- how about, is there any regular meetings on Tuesdays?
Oh, looks safe, sometimes it's on Tuesday.
Yeah, uh, our, uh, next one should be on the nineteenth unless we. Go over to something, a new meeting I could make.
You don't have one on the twelfth?
No.
Nobody said the next one's on the nineteenth.
Okay, then we don't have one then either.
All right, how does the twelfth work for everybody?
That should work.
I can't do that one. Most of you can't.
You can't make the twelfth either? All right, so we're up to five again, so. We all right with that? All right, here we go. Tuesday, the twelfth, six P M. I may be able to attend a virtual meeting. Okay. And just so you know. We will be just doing the first part of this uh, this one, because we, we gotta remember, don't leave yet, we're not done. It'd be the two, the two, twenty twenty five draft wage and benefit. Budget, that's it. Right? So. Is everybody good with that? All right, so now it goes back, are people comfortable in giving Jeff and Ray? Their raises, or do you wanna wait? Until after we have that, because then we'll have to make a, a motion since we postpone those to postpone them to the November meeting. What are, what are people's feelings?
I think waiting on doing those adjustments should be done to figure out how we're providing. That and or cola raises, because if we're trying to reward them for improving things, we have to look at what they're gonna get, and then we're like, and now we're gonna add.
I hear you, I hear you.
Top of it or something, like, is this gonna be kind of a generalized idea?
Yeah.
Right, that's a big number, since we don't even know what their regular raises is gonna be.
Okay. So what we'll need to do though, since we already did a motion to postpone those. We'll need a motion to propose postpone them to the November meeting. And that would be the board meeting, not this special, we're not taking any action.
I'll make a motion to postpone those two raises for consideration at the November meeting.
Right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same, so moved. All right. We didn't take action on that, so we don't have to, future agenda item. Nothing, all right, go have a motion.
I'll make a motion to return.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right, thank you.